Live on the water. One lady screams that, she goes, "Good job."
Yes, I think the last time I made sure to be.
Well, you are live and you are.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rachel, welcome. It's a pleasure to have you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you guys being on Zoom for me.
Oh, absolutely. We'd like to ask if you have any questions, to please address them.
And we also have, we also have Ms. Cagiano, our preschool teacher and president of the NCA here as well. She's the well. She may be muted, so that's okay.
Oh, that's okay. Yeah, I have, I have many questions asking about the reading program.
I hope so as well. I'm an entry student at Johnson School, and I'd love to see it continue. I've been thinking about a book club program about Rockston Ahahn, which is an annual event that we have with volunteers. I've been in touch with Mr. Bob Kuzak, who is our connection to the post art and Veterans Day. So this is really a year where we're looking at finding all the events that we had three years ago, and how we can bring them back. And so we're really hoping to bring back all the volunteers in all the events that we've had in the past. And step by step, we'll get there.
And then as we see, another course on is regarding the special education program. And there seems to be concerns regarding the services that this person, their child or receiving. And so I thought, you know, first my thoughts on the whole process is that, you know, I want you to feel confident in the services that we provide. I want to be a whole person that has the goal to make children successful and independent. And then also just thinking about the process of, somebody did have a comment about the services that they were receiving. How do they go about rectifying their situation? Because I think communication overall is very important. And that as a parent or caregiver, your fear is that your child isn't going to be successful. And you want that. And I want you to feel supported in that goal. So explaining the process of the special education program and the goal.
Certainly. Madam Chair, it's for you, members of the committee. Let me start with the federal data. Our special education students and what S M P S did very well relative to our non-special education students or general education students. Every year, the state compares English language learners, special education students, and students who are neither. And they look at the gap. Now, historically, our school has had a small gap, and the gap has been dwindled. So data shows that our special education program is working very well. In addition, we have brought back students from out of district places that have typically been in out of district schools, and that's one of our goals. We, all of us, including, I know, members of the school committee, believe that the closer to a community school that a student can be educated in, the better it is with their children that they will go through adulthood in high school. So those two factors as a baseline. The way the special education process is set up, and Massachusetts has the oldest one in the country. In 1974, it was called Chapter 766, it began special education in the United States. The state's own name in Massachusetts. Set up to be somewhat, as it would be. So typically, when someone believes the student is not achieving at his or her appropriate rate, testing is done. The parent signs off on this test. Nothing can be done without the parent's approval. Often, once the parent instigates, they say, gee, I'm a little worried about my child. You know, I want testing. They can have us do testing, or some parents choose to have a third party do the testing. And then the results of that data goes to an individual education program meeting, IEP meeting. At that meeting, a group decision is made. The people who make it are educators, the people who did the testing are often dependents. Our team chair meets the meeting, Patty Gerlitz, who has a lot of experience dealing with it. And Linda Raymond, of course, who retired recently, had years and years of experience dealing with it. So a decision is made based on the data, based on the recommendation of the teachers and the other staff members. It's basically a psychological, social, academic, and deeply oversimplified, with lots of categories inside of it. And a program, or a meeting, is developed for the student. The vast percentage of mine, parents need to be feeling supported, feeling that the educators know their child, want the best thing for them. Sometimes, they don't. And then if the parents choose not to agree to the IEP, the program, they don't sign it. Then it goes to a poll that goes to the state. And there is some fact finding that could take place. Or it can go to an arbitration where a person who knows special education makes the decision. What I left out of the description is that some parents have an advocate. Some parents have an attorney. That tends to make the process more formal and elongates it. And sometimes makes it more difficult to reach agreement. Not always, sometimes it's very simple. I can't get involved in a special education decision. The principal can't get involved, and you can't get involved. It's inappropriate according to state law. And the reason is that we kind of run the district. And the thought process is by the state is if people like us get involved, they may be making a decision about students' education based on money, convenience, availability, all kinds of things. Other than that, that group decision that makes the decision about what's best for the child. Now, for about the first 20 years of special education, the phrase that was used was maximum feasible benefit. That's a tough standard to think about. As a parent, I could say probably any part, well, my child could be doing better if you blank. You know, there's a new center to, oh, it's a academy. I'm making that up. About 17 years ago, the standard in the country changed to demonstrated growth. And now, if student A is under an IEP for one year, they look at the growth. If the team thinks growth is taking place, the change from year one to two is null. Same thing happens in year two, with the exception that every three years, the whole process basically starts again. So there's one year evaluations and IEP meetings, there's two years, and there's three years. Generally speaking, our special educators are tops in the field. Our director has over 40 years' experience. Our team chair has over 20 years' experience. Our teachers, our speech and language pathologists have many years' experience. Our occupational therapists have many years' experience here. And we're in good stead. One thing that happened this year is our special education teacher left. Went to a district closer to that teacher's home. And in her resignation letter said she would prefer to be in that district that she could learn from other special education teachers as compared to be the only one. So as you know, there's 300,000 unfilled teaching positions in the United States. So Mr. Andrews, I did all kinds of things. I called my colleagues, we laughed at me, we said we were hung up on it. Framingham started a school today with 75 teacher vacancies and 17 bus drivers. So it's tough. So we were able to find someone with a special education background in a different grade level, a younger grade level. And I called Ryan DeBine, the Assistant Commissioner of Education in charge of E R, who's education licensed, sure. And I said, Brian, lay out the process for us. And he did, and he followed every process. We will be helping that special education teacher. But I want to be clear that you understand and you have the resume. This person has years of experience in special education, just at a different grade level and at different places. So we actually picked up a special educator with much, much more experience than the one who left, who had two years' experience. The first year was during COVID. There we was in 2021, it's a tough year, and 2122, we're still there with COVID a little bit. Part of what we did last year to make sure that our special education program was strong is we sent our special education teacher and one other classroom teacher for special three-day Wilson training. I have asked that second teacher, who's still here, to pick up students who need that program. And I have written an agreement with the union that they are analyzing and deciding. If they say yes, we're all set. In October, we'll send two more teachers, the special education teacher who is here now, who has a lot of really special training, just not in this one program, and hopefully one other primary teacher. So we'll always have multiple teachers, and we'll grow that every year. So in the coming years, we'll have some more teachers. And the reason we do it slowly is not about expense. It's about the teachers have to miss three days of teaching, and we have to cover them. So there's a, you know, there's a positive, and as always, there's a negative. Right now, we are waiting to communicate the results of the union interpretation of the agreement that I wrote. I have spoken to the teacher. I've spoken to the union president. And today, I had multiple conversations with the Massachusetts speeches, the regulation field group. So we're working hard at it. I hope that answered your question.
It's a great summary of the fact that I need to have that. And I, I should do that along with detail cuts, but you think that. And I think that exactly, I think that was exactly the question. You know, this whole, the opposite can fit all together, I think, under the whole model. But what can we do to support, given the changes now, you know, with their, a little, they're out and some money to make sure that the teachers have the training they need to support their students? But to answer that question honestly perfectly.
Yeah. I can candidly say to funds, resources, support from you and this community are sufficient. It's time. It's that balance of, I mean, there's other programs, reading programs, that teachers can go to that are 10 days long. And we want a teacher to be out of his or her classroom for 10 days. So it's, well, you know, we're pretty conservative like that, but I think that's the right thing to go. Because what we never want to get involved in is something I call the stakeholders. We have general education parents thinking that the district is putting too much emphasis on teachers choosing students who need help. Or the opposite, you think that the parents of the guardians of the students who need help think that the district doesn't give them enough money. And that's, that's really a balance. And I think right now, we're in good stead, and we'll continue to work on it. This summer, we were delayed in making this program because of the lack of activities. Of, no, we're fully staffed. Everybody has the appropriate license. One teacher has a waiver. And we are, I mean, I can't wait to talk to you about the staff, because we just know that.
That's great, the guarantee. I think the combination. And I think, you know, if there is something that, you know, a caregiver feel that they're in line seeing that they have within their IEP that actually needs to go to the special education director. And then it's so much all of it.
Yeah. And if it doesn't work that way, you, as you always do, would turn it over to me. You know, you send an email and call me. And then I would go to the special education director and say, here's the issue. Please stress it. But it's really a team that addresses everything. One of the other side issues in special education is lots of times, students get special services, but say, you know, providing resources. I haven't even talked about the five or four programs. They're basically physical. They're different. IEPs are always educational. It's about learning and accommodation. But sometimes, students blossom. And they don't need services after a certain point. We need a driven. Always with team decision. And the parents are sometimes hesitant to give them up. Because of something working. That's why the child is growing so much. But on work of our jobs as parents, as grandparents, as educators, it's independence. So there's that, you know, that, that balance again. Giving enough services for what's needed at this time, and yet not making a student dependent on others. And sometimes, that's a debate that has some tension. And that's okay. It should.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Is there any questions? I have a question in terms of, you know, activity direction.
Sure, sure. If that's what makes you, I mean, first of all, you're letting.
Right.
You need to be comfortable with your role. If you're more comfortable bringing it up, because somebody contacted you about something that's outside the purview of the school committee, Mr. Andrews and I will help, hopefully, you understand, not only that it's not under your purview, but also give you an explanation why. And then they'll take it, either take it over, or some school committee members prefer to call the person back themselves. Whatever you're comfortable with. You know, we're flexible.
Madam Chair, I'm hearing that it would be helpful if the members would speak loudly and towards the computer.
Yeah, sure. Oh, I'm so sorry, everybody.
I do know that several members of the committee got a letter from a member of the, excuse me, members of the committee got an email from a member of the community. And I do want you to know that, that, that issue is a concern about the interface between the school programs and the town programs. And Mr. Barletta has invited myself and Mr. Andrews and a couple of staff members who work for the town of Mahahn to a meeting. And it looks like it's going to happen September 13th. So.
Sounds exactly what you were talking about. I can say that.
That's okay. You're very welcome. Yeah, Mr. Barletta has chosen that path as the town administrator, and I can help.
Yeah.
It really doesn't do any, you know, in my opinion, there's been a misunderstanding and people, and we can very quickly solve it. So we can continue to work very, very closely together with our colleagues at the town.
Madam Chair, I'd also like to let you know that Ms. Barbara Howard has joined us on Zoom.
Hi, Rodan. Does anyone on the call have any questions to respond to? Does anyone on the call have any questions to respond to? Okay. If we move on to the examination and authorization.
We're good. I think, I think we're good. I did see Ms. Cagiano noted that there was some difficulty with sound as well.
Okay.
But I moved it forward and hoping that helps.
Really loud.
Yeah.
Let us know if this doesn't help.
We may have to get a microphone.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel like we're really far away from this, especially with the.
The pickup of the broadcast microphone is pretty good, but it may pay to have Charles get this microphone. And put it right on the table.
Yeah.
Right next to the chair.
Yeah, she says, Robin says, still can't make them look great. Yeah, so.
Okay.
Hope's at home.
Robin, I bet you don't have any trouble with my voice, do you?
Yes, so.
Robin, I'd rather stop speaking, but I'll try.
I'm happy to move it forward and, and we lose video, which might be better than having, you know, poor audio. Is that okay with Madam Chair? Okay.
That's probably a good idea.
We won't see your pretty face, Mr. Parentozzi, but.
Oh, there's absolutely no loss there.
All right. Well, we have the school committee on.
Good.
Okay.
What does that mean?
You've got the law.
Uh, yeah. So it says, this was from a half an hour ago from, from Nancy, Ms. Cagiano. Mentioning the first thing about the sound.
Got all four school committee members?
Yeah, we got all four. Yep. The elected individuals are, are there and move forward.
Okay. So moving on to the examination and authorization.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is item five. And you have the bill roll in front of you. And you also have all of the individual invoice sheets that need your signature. And the master sheet needs three signatures on it. The bill rolls total thirty-five thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and forty-six cents. Among those bills are our annual ten thousand dollar fee to the North Shore Educational Consortium for our membership. We had an elevator repair for a thousand thirty-five dollars. We have some national grid bills that we paid. There is a, there are two checks to me and one to Kevin. One check is for lodging and my attendance at the annual superintendent's convention. The other is for food that we purchased. And Kevin and mine, fifty-six oh two, and the thirty-five ninety-eight was for food that we purchased for our new staff members for their training days. We always feel that, just like you feel, you know, when you're saying hello to people, food always smoothes it out. And we were very frugal. We picked it up ourselves and we did Market Basket and Dunkin' Donuts Coffee. And as you know, I always like to explain whenever a staff member is getting money. The rest of it is very typical.
I'll make a motion. Yes, I was just about to ask. Thank you for leading me to it. Can I have a motion? And I will make a motion to approve the bill roll in the second. There were five on the day. The amount of thirty-five thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and forty-six cents. My second guess. I'll agree. So moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Obviously, lots going on at the beginning of school. I will try to make it as quick as I can. Because I know there's a lot on my agenda and so let's get started. Item six A, COVID update. I met with the public health nurse and with our school nurse today. In your packet, you have a one-sheeter. There's a lot of confusion out in our world about what's going on with COVID. So I'm going to try to make it as simple as possible. Number one, all the limitations for schoolchildren and staff basically are off. There's no physical distancing. There is no spraying. There is no nothing. The only thing that we do now is we respond to symptomatic students and staff. If an individual is symptomatic, the nurse will make a determination. At the bottom of that sheet, you have a left column and a right column. The left column tends to be the ones the nurse would send a student home for. The right column is ones that she has or he has a little bit more leeway. If the student goes home, and this is the big key, we ask that parents get them tested. If they're positive, they stay home for five days. If they're negative, they come back when their symptoms have alleviated. So it's all based on symptomology. If a student does have symptoms, does test, test positive, they stay home for five days. If they test negative, then the nurse decides if they have to wear a mask for day six through ten. And I'm just going to say that they work with, the nurse is going to work with the parents and guardians on that. Or the, or the parent can keep the child home day six through ten. It's up to them. The key is, in order to come back, child should not have no symptoms for twenty-four hours. Now, if you think about it, that's exactly what we've been doing with slow, with anything else for years. So it really fits into the pattern that we're very familiar with. The one thing that is a little different is the guidelines from the CDC says that mask should be worn in the nurse's office. Again, the public health nurse and our school nurse said, yeah, unless they're not worried about what the symptoms, you know, somebody comes in with nasal congestion and a runny nose, not going to fall. Think about that. If I could solve mask on.
We're, we're.
Yeah, above, you know, blood, blood, yeah. So there's still some decision-making, which I am thrilled with because we happen to have two of the most experienced and qualified, quality nurses that we're dealing with. I implore the parents and guardians who are watching. And we are going to put a message in our newsletter to this effect and maybe even a separate email. Test the children and stay in contact with the school nurse. We don't want to exclude children. On the other hand, we don't want sick kids coming and all of a sudden we have an outbreak. And then we have twenty-five people not being able to come to school. As you know, this sub-variant is weird. Friend of mine accompanied me to a funeral service on Thursday. She has COVID and I don't. I tested myself yesterday. Then I will test myself again tomorrow. I do tend to do it every other day. She felt bad for a day and a half, both. And now she's already recovered. I talked to a parent last week at the evening event. He told me he's healthy as a horse, never gets sick. And he's had a couple of neat times. And every time he gets it, it gets worse. So, I mean, there's, there's no rules, really. So that's my report. And of course, if you have any questions. And obviously, we stay in contact with the CDC and the ESE and the public health nurse. If they change, we change. But right now, we have cafeteria tables. I have asked the teachers keep the kids, you know, when they're in line, give them a little space, you know. Not six feet, but you know, they shouldn't be breathing on each other's necks when they're leaving line. That I just think is, is good all the time.
Yeah. I just have a question about the school website and the marketing page. And just, that and how to, with the some information.
Yes.
Okay.
But we'll check.
Yeah, right now.
Thank you.
I have been told, yes.
I'm sure. Yeah, Cheryl worked, has worked over the summer actually to get the new guidance out and she's been in touch with us. So it should be a hundred percent, but before the end of the week.
Yeah, we'll double check. It's always better to double check. Thank you. That's a good reminder. Yeah. Mr. Andrews will put that on his to-do list.
So Kevin, would you like to share?
I'd be happy to, Ms. Harris. Thank you for inviting and sharing, sharing this opportunity. So under teaching and learning, I'd like to let you know that we have several new professional development blocks on our schedule for the school year. Each month, we'll have an extra hour meeting with the teachers. And I'm working with Superintendent Parentozzi and the staff to schedule those. Our first one will be about police department training in light of what's happened recently around the country and it's continuing to happen. We want to stay on top of it and understand what the best and greatest methods are for keeping our kids safe. And also making our staff feel comfortable and seeing police officers in the school and just, just having the facility with it. And so we, we met with Officer Monroe today to plan some of those sessions. We'll also be using those sessions to plan for our new program called Handwriting Without Tears. And this is to help students with handwriting and also with cursing, which is actually still a Massachusetts standard. People think it's gone. But we've learned that handwriting is a great way to help students remember what they learn. And by doing that, you can really build another modality using a pencil and a paper. The pencil actually gives a little friction to the paper. And so they've learned that using that method, which has been around for ever, pretty much, before the chisel and the stone. So we're going to be putting that in place this year and seeing how we get integrated with our current programs. Staff has also expressed an interest in having more training on responsive classroom. And this is something that's been up at school since before I joined. But we always have new staff members. Fortunately, the new staff members that we have are familiar with the program. And the pedagogy of it is, is essentially that you respect the student as an individual. They are a part of the community. They come in to help write the goals. And the adults really have an idea of what we want to see in our classrooms. And the students have an idea of what they want to see too. And most often, they align. And so it's an opportunity to provide students and staff a chance to talk about those goals and then have a common language around them. In common signals for quiet, things like that. We've been doing it for years, but it's always important to recognize that we have new staff joining. And we want to keep everybody on the same page, ready up for discussion and how can we bring it further. In the area of mystery science, we have been able to secure supply packs. These are nice boxes. I akin them to Blue Apron Food Service Delivery, where you get a Ziploc bag that tells you, okay, you're on unit one, you need twenty wooden spoons, you need twenty rubber bands, and you need aluminum foil. And this will tell you, this will help you do that lesson that is in your science class. And so each teacher will be getting these packs this year. Last year, we had some supply constraints because of, as everyone is aware, the issues of supply concerns right now with COVID. But we're, we're back on board with mystery science. We had it last year online only. We have it online again. It has videos with it. And the teachers will have their kits this year with the disposable materials that will help it make it easier for them. We'll also be using professional development time in that one-hour block on the monthly meetings to help them get ready for it. I also want to let you know about music and art. We hired Ms. Laura Chaney, who's a fantastic professional artist last year. This year, we have Lisa Button joining us, also an experienced finance teacher. She's a music teacher. Looking forward to having her join us. She put together a very nice schedule of things that she would like to order. And so Superintendent Parentozzi approved that. We have those in the works. We have these really large wooden instruments that have been dying for six years for someone to use. And it looks like a giant xylophone. And each one is a different note. Each student has a different, gets a different note and then a mallet. And then that student plays that note when it's their turn. And so it's, it's really building the hands-on, minds-on integration of the lesson. She knows how to do it. She wants to do it. We're spending five hundred dollars to, to repair those parts that we've had for years. And she said, these are, these are wonderful instruments. I said, yeah, no, they look great. And so she's, she's looking forward to doing that, building xylophones in. And NEF is going to be supporting an online curriculum that she likes to use as well. The art teacher also put together a nice order of materials that, that she would need for her classroom. Over the past few years, we haven't had so many orders from that department, those two departments. And I think it's going to help replenish their supplies. It's nice to see that we have staff on board that know how to use them and integrate them into the classes. And I think that's going to be fantastic. On events, we have the back-to-school bonfire. That's September first. That's at six-thirty. I encourage everybody, everybody to come out to Short Beach for that. Always a great event. There'll be smores and more for welcoming the students back to school. Today, we had preschool orientation. I thought that went really well. We welcomed the parents and the preschoolers. And I believe we have thirty-five or thirty-six preschool students. So it's, we still are heavily weighted towards the lower grades. Those students will be coming forward. And we had a great orientation day today, a one-hour orientation. And then tomorrow, all the Wednesday kids will come. And then Thursday, all the Thursday kids will come. I want to thank the PTO. Fantastic, excellent energy this morning out at the curb. James Deloyd is the new PTO president. And he's brought a lot of great energy to the group, including t-shirts, coffee, donuts, muffins, tents, and ideas. So, yeah, he's, he's fantastic. I don't know how the team is keeping it together. They're doing it somehow.
We try.
So hopefully, you know, we'll have some parent volunteers who take some pieces off of Mr. Deloyd's plate so that he can, you know, cook dinner while Ms. Deloyd is here at the school committee. Yeah, good. Okay. But I'm really looking forward to working with the PTO this year as we build back many of our traditions. We had a back-to-school slush, huge success. Unbelievable. I thought, I think we saw fifty, sixty people at that. Really wonderful to see the turnout for that event. And Mr. Was there for that as well and welcomed all the new families.
And I just want to say that it was really nice too, since we had some new staff this year, like I, you know, for my daughter. It was really nice for her to go see her classroom, meet her new teacher. It actually brings like a sense of glory before school starts. So I thought that that was actually really nice, the opportunity that I was to meet the teachers and see the classrooms.
Great. Best part of the goal that evening is to have that icebreaker so that the students aren't crossing the threshold for the first time the first day.
Yeah.
Especially if students have any questions in their mind about what it's going to look like. I, you know, I had some first graders, where's my cubby going to be? You know, where do I put my lunch? It makes sense. You know, where do I park my car if you're a new staff member? You know, these are the questions the kids have.
Yeah.
Same questions that adults have.
So thanks for doing that.
Great. I'm glad to hear it and thank you for sharing that, Madam Deloyd. In terms of new traditions or our continuing traditions, we have our ecology school trip. This is something that's happened for years before COVID and we're bringing it back. The ecology school that used to be at Ferry Beach is now in Maine. And so they're at a, they're at a farm that they bought. And so all the fifth and sixth graders will be going up with myself, two teachers and a paraprofessional. Really looking forward to it. I'm going to be sending an email with more details about it and what we need to know from you and from your student
Great.
about the ecology school. We're going to be looking for two deposits for about a hundred fifty dollars apiece. But of course, the Student Activity Fund is happy to fund any student that is having difficulty or any family, I should say, that, you know, has any challenge with it. We have a full Student Activity Fund that hasn't been used in two years. And so we can easily take care of half or a full tuition on that. And that email will be going out, I'm going to say probably tomorrow or the next day. Um that trip is October 3rd through 5th. They have a school nurse at the ecology school. Uh so that person is there. I met them before. I went there years ago. I bring my vehicle in case there's a, a need for transportation. I got my cell phone. Parents will be in touch. And it's only, it's only a little over, it's an hour and forty-five minutes away from Naha.
That's exciting.
And we'll have a buzz today.
I'm excited about that.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing that again.
Yeah, thank you.
I think it's going to be wonderful. It was, it was great when we went last time. And um the fifth and sixth graders go every other year.
Right.
So we'll go this year, you'll go in here about it next year. We'll talk about it again in two years. Finally, I'd just like to remind you that we have open house on Wednesdays, November 7th, 6 to 8. We'll have a whole school address, and then you'll have opportunities to meet your uh classroom teacher in the classroom. We don't encourage you to bring your kids because they usually don't like to sit around and listen to it. Uh we don't ban them. Um but if you keep them on the side, or if you find someone at home, you take care of them. That'd be great.
Sorry, one question. Is that just fully in-person?
That's fully in-person only.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's only in-person only, but it's for two hours, so if you can find a window in there that works, that's great. It's hard, it's, it's challenging, as I'm sure you know, to melt in-person and remote. Um you know, if you're sitting still, it works fine, but if you bounce around and you want to show somebody some piece of Play-Doh or a unit, it's harder. So uh we're planning on that being in-person. Uh and going forward, our, our default is going to be in-person. Uh so you're going to wonder about that. Um we're going to pretend like it's, you know, 2018 and um can go forward with the in-person. Uh at IEP meetings, you know, such as this, we typically will offer a, a remote option. Uh because you're sitting down, you know, not moving around. You know, we have technology set up here. Um but to have teachers set up links and all the rest of it, we'd rather not. And and you get a better connection.
Great, great. Thank you so much.
Sure thing. Lot going on.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, you're going to the school.
Yeah. Moving on to the sleeping.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh through you. The first thing I want to do is I want to thank the school committee for your generosity, providing breakfast for the entire staff yesterday. It was enjoyable, it was luxurious, and adorable. Uh staff really felt uh special. Uh and of course, as uh Kevin said, the PTO for breakfast today. And each of our new staff members got a little gift from the PTO. I have no idea what it is, but I, yep.
It was a basket from Trinket Store Market in the morning.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
They touched.
Yeah.
Wonderful. So thanks to uh, thanks to you and thanks to the PTO. Uh the first thing I want you to know is in your packet labeled 6C, you have this year's new and improved facilities use, a three-page uh use document. I made a couple of changes on it to make it um make more sense and be clearer. So for example, number two, uh we're not going to allow half-day rentals. Um we're going to handle half-days like we do a holiday jump-off day. And when the kids leave, that's it for the day. Uh rather than basketball or or hockey used in school. Now we give the custodians a little bit more time to catch up and give the building a little, you know, a little redo. Uh and that's basically it. Uh everything else is just, you know, all grammatical. Um I clarified the first sentence on the third page. Uh there's a fifty-dollar per hour charge when a custodian is not scheduled to be on duty during the time requested by any rental. There was a little confusion because if you look up above, it says community and civic, no charge. So I wanted to make sure everybody realized that the school district was going to fight the bullet for the custodian, even if we weren't charging them. So they're really the, the two big changes. Uh the uh cafeteria fans are great. I'll tell you what a difference today. Have a little breeze in there. Um I have signed a contract with Morel, which is a company uh which actually, believe it or not, put our current box, bells, and phones in in 2006 and 2007. Uh our stuff is so outdated, it's absurd. To the point that one of, one of the uh administrative phones breaks. The cost is fifteen hundred dollars to replace it. The phone price, because, you know, it's got to be like custom-made, I would imagine. So for about forty-two thousand dollars, we're getting an entire new system uh funded interfaces with cell phones and um. And the good news is, I predicted that we would need this, so I told the county accountant uh to save our two thousand twenty-two funds. And so we're going to, I've encumbered the money.
Great, right.
So it won't impact the current user's budget.
So it's a phone?
Phone system, all new phones. All, all new phones, uh twenty-five classrooms and six administrative phones. Uh all new software, hardware. Uh the wiring is basically the only thing that will be here. And uh it doesn't have to be replaced because it's, you know, it's relatively, you know, for copper. Uh obviously, we'd be better if we had fiber optics, but we don't. Everything will still work, work well. Uh a funny story is, I got, I got the bid. And I said to the salesperson, I don't know if you can do it. You got to be able to find me a little bit of discount. So uh the bid was forty-two, seven, twenty-nine, sixty, eighty-seven, and we got it for a thousand dollars less. So we saved a thousand dollars. But a thousand dollars is a thousand dollars, right? You never know if you don't ask.
Yeah.
That's my theory. Um our alarm system is functioning. Last evening was the first uh day we had the new system on. Uh I have personally met with the fire chief and a couple of police officers to walk them through the system. It's a good thing I did because one of the alarm codes wasn't working today. We don't know why. Um and that's great. So basically, this building will be fully alarmed at the end of the second shift when our night custodian leaves. And it will be uh de-alarm uh when our day custodian arrives at approximately six AM. It will be alarmed all holidays and all weekends. There are six of us who have codes. Each of our codes is personal. So if I punch my code in, the system remembers it's me. Uh the staff was informed that if they have an emergency and have to get into the building off hours, they need to call one of us. And I also told them, don't make it a frivolous request. You know, I forgot a book I want to read. Because once I give my code, or once one of us gives our code, we have to change it. And we don't want to do that too often because that's a hassle. I want to thank the DPW for our new concrete and asphalt work uh out by the flagpole. And over by the Flash Road, there was a rough spot on the, as you drove out of um the parking lot to the um Castle Road, it was a real broken-up part. That's been always placed. So thanks to them. I was a little worried. I was more than a little worried. They showed up Wednesday of last week. I went, oh my God. All summer, they got it done.
And and Superintendent Parentos, I understand that uh Raffielli uh construction may have been involved in that as well.
Um, yes, I believe most of the work was done by Raffielli.
Okay.
Yeah. And of course, we know them well.
Yeah.
Uh they've been involved with ours wonderful school for years, and of course, most of our beautiful landscaping is donated by that. Uh or Miss Brandon, one of the two.
That's right, that's right, yeah.
Okay. So Madam Chair, that's my facilities report, and of course, you follow up down the hallway so you know what good shape we're in.
Yeah.
Uh six days of preliminary enrollment class size report, and in your package, you have a lot of stuff, so I'm going to blast through it. First thing is our class size by grade. Our small, our uh younger's primary grades are growing, and we have a dip in our upper grades that will be filled in as time goes by. I also gave for you uh, I gave you for your education, the specialist schedule. That's the colorful one. That shows you that that um on Monday and Tuesday, we have physical education and health. STEM on Wednesday, music on uh on Thursday or on Friday, and that also gives you the schedule of when classes go to those periods. We will also have library, and that will fold in at a different time. Uh we haven't set that schedule up yet, but it will be set up. Uh the next sheet of paper in your packet is our um breakdown of classes. Uh and I'm going to go very quickly. Ms. Pastor, and this is Pejio, our in pre-k again, Erin Martin has moved to kindergarten. Maddie Fodero is in first grade. Linda Antrim and Molly Santora are in second grade. Britt Lucian is in third, Conrad is in fourth, and Gabby. Um Rattamaker is a new name for you. She got married. And Ruth Curvis continues to be in sixth. Uh our phys ed teacher is new. Uh our STEM teacher, Alyssa Klein, is returning. Uh Lisa Button is new in music. Uh Laura Chaney uh is returning for her second year. Emily Jordan is our special education teacher. And Ms. Trandler, Chi, Cheryl, Heidi are returning, and our counselor, Riley, admits her stuff. And then, once again, I want to thank uh the staff members and the parents and guardians of our purpose, our good interviewees. We also are in, uh let me say that. Um paid enrollments, six-day. Uh if you notice, we have a very healthy afternoon program except for Friday, which makes sense. Uh our preschool is very big, very healthy. We'll have plenty of, our lunch bunch has grown significantly. We do two staff members. And our before-school enrollment is up to four. And uh we will have that all year.
Great.
Um a couple of parents have said, I need it. If it runs a deficit, let me know. We'll pick it. I don't think that's going to have to happen.
Great. I, can I just add that um how appreciative I am of the Island Program? I am hearing lots of um chatter about some school systems, you know, dealing with, you know, teacher deficits but after-school program deficits, and just want to say thank you for uh having this program available to us. Um I can't imagine having to try to figure out after-school and not having here, so I just appreciate that, you know, this option.
Yeah, the, the three programs that I said, parents are so pleased that we were able to continue is the, the small before-spoke program for uh members of the community that have to jump off the island early in the day to go to work. Uh then, of course, preschool. Uh the lunch bunch program, which is whirling like crazy so that parents can work. And then the after-school program, so they continue to work. And um it makes it convenient. But it also enables parents uh with school-aged children to be wage earners. And in today's world, that's huge.
Madam Chair, I'd like to add, uh today I was able to meet several of the new staff members that are going going to be in the after-school program, and they're fantastic individuals. I was really happy um with their selections. And um I feel confident that our students will be put hands. Um with any new staff members, that'd be important. We still have Darian Beckel uh as our staff member, as the uh site coordinator. I'll be the liaison um with Jesse. Um but they, they brought out some new staff members and are hoping to um take students off the waitlist as available.
Yeah, we do have a waitlist.
Oh, wow. I was just saying, wow. For all days except Friday, or?
Yes.
I think the waitlist right now was, um, what was it, Wednesday? I thought it was a waitlist for some reason.
Yep. Mm-hmm. Yeah, we're hopeful of getting it uh but we're hopeful to meeting the needs of all the parents and guardians and family and children because um IR is still hiring. And they're having, obviously, they have
Right, yeah, yeah.
All right, so um any questions about the data that I've given? Superb. Back to normal. That's my new phrase, back to normal.
Yeah, finally.
Yeah, so um, Madam Chair, the next thing is the personnel report. Uh Thursday, I am interviewing a paraprofessional. We are fully staffed, but um those of you who have gone to FinCon with me know I talk about breakage. When an experienced staff member retires or leaves, usually there's a gap. And rather than not use that money, what uh I have really decided to do with Kevin's full support and at his urging, is hire an extra paraprofessional. So we'll have two. We'll have the paraprofessionals who are here all the time. And then we'll have two part-time paraprofessionals here on Tuesdays, so that when we have IEP meetings, it's very calm. Instead of, somebody has to cover this to cover this, but this suits your head. And we're going to make it nice and calm.
Great.
Okay? And uh I thought I had somebody we were ready to hire last week, but they didn't show up for their interview, so so we, we have to move forward. In your packet, you have um resumes. I'm going to go quickly. Please stop me with any questions anytime. First of all, uh for our guests, uh the resumes that the school committee have in front of them are all redacted of any dates and personal information, like phone numbers or emails. Um and I personally redacted them. And uh I don't think I missed anything. So our first one is Molly Santora. Molly is formerly a second-grade teacher at the Learning Product Project and has two years teaching elementary schools at Greenwich Academy. I think several of you know about Greenwich, Connecticut?
Yes.
Extraordinary educational uh community. Uh and uh the Greenwich Academy, even the private school, of course, even more so. So she has experience with very intensive learning. Uh she has, is also a registered yoga instructor. And she has worked at Trinity College, and she has worked in a role. So uh pretty amazing. Um and we are thrilled to have her join us. Okay, any questions? Yeah. Um next one, number two, is our third-grade teacher. I don't think Britt Lucian needs any introduction. Uh but one of the letters you got from someone was a concern about lack of, you know, lack of experience. Well, as you see from Britt's resume, there's anything but a lack of experience. Just has experience in different things. She was a paraprofessional here. She was a fifth-grade math tutor in Swanscott. She was an assistant preschool teacher for years. She was the founder and president of the business. She uh is a a superlative tennis player and was a tennis coach, is a tennis coach. And she also owned a daycare center. We are thrilled to steal with that. I have to tell you a funny story. Um I'm at a principals convention representing Massachusetts Partnerships for Youth. Uh we had a table set up. Jason Malcolm, I'm good, comes by and says, you stole Britt. And I looked at her instantly. I didn't want, want to be gruff, but I just said, you stole her first. And he started laughing. And that's actually what happened. So um So, um, but we're thrilled to have her back.
She got a big read, a big, great read today. Around my daughter and a bunch of the other kids in third grade. I, the pictures I took of her, she just was like, I can't believe this. So it was a really great, uh, thing, and they were so happy to have her as well.
Great.
Yeah.
So, um, next teacher is our health and physical education teacher, Amy Shaver Latte. Uh, last year we had an individual, and again, the teacher left August. And we didn't know about it this year, the teacher told us the end of the school year, she was returning. We had a first year teacher who really was more of a coach than a phys ed teacher. And, uh, Amy is a, a wonderful, uh, teacher. She has worked in, um, Waltham for nineteen years as a teacher. She is point four, so she's working on Monday, Tuesday. She also has another part time job, and she is also a professional fitness trainer. And, um, we are thrilled to have her join us. Again, um, very experienced, uh, much more so than the teacher who left, although there was nothing wrong with the teacher we had before, she did a fine job. Uh, the music teacher, uh, Lisa Button is next. She's a retired teacher from New York State, and she has a little bit of experience in Massachusetts. Um, you may be aware that New York State is one of the leading states for music education in the country. Um, uh, they obviously have, uh, Ross Rochester Institute for Music Education. They have, uh, Jewel Park. And they have Indica. And, um, if the college is the premier teacher preparation university in the country for, um, music education. Um, and, uh, we are just over the top because Lisa has experience. She's been a vocal teacher, she's been a musical theater director, she's been a choral teacher. She's been a voice and piano instructor. She's been a drama instructor. Um, and she also has worked in Massachusetts at, uh, Chelsea High School for a brief period of time. Uh, she is gonna bring a depth to our music program that we haven't had so once again, we're thrilled. Uh, next is Riley Edmonds. Riley jumped right in. We hired her and she, uh, we said, what are you doing this summer? And then she said, I have some time. She jumped right into the camp. So she learned, uh, the families and the kids. Uh, she has a master's degree in, uh, adjustment counseling. Uh, she, uh, has been, um, again, an adjustment counselor in Marblehead Schools, very similar to us, obviously. Uh, she's also, uh, been a substitute teacher in P Buddy. She's worked for Kids Only in Massachusetts. And, uh, she's been a long time substitute in Marblehead as a counselor. And she has developed, uh, and worked with targeted groups and individuals. And once again, um, thrilled to be here and we're thrilled to have her.
She, um, sorry, she parts, oh, point eight.
Point eight.
Okay.
Uh, once again, because we had someone who had had four, five, six years' experience, I was able to translate a point five five to point eight.
Maybe that's great.
So Riley will be here more than, uh, five days.
I, I appreciate that. Yeah.
Yeah. And, uh, you know, really appreciate such.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So Ms. Edmonds will be here five days a week.
Okay.
Um, and then she'll be filling off and actually going through an afternoon program that she works in as well. But we're glad that she'll be here five days to handle, uh, situations and be consistent.
Yes. Yeah, yes.
There's a perfect example of using breakage to the district's advantage, the school's advantage, and the advantage of the students.
Yes.
Rather than putting this money somewhere for something else. You use it in the same vein you were spending it before. I think her point eight salary is like a thousand dollars more than the point five five salary was. So.
Yeah.
It's great.
Yes.
And the last teacher, not the last staff member, but the last teacher I wanna talk about is Emily Jordan. And again, you know, we've heard about someone being not certified. Well, if you look at her experience, she's been a third grade inclusion teacher. She's taught integrated, and integrated is special education and general education students in first grade. She's taught in an integrated preschool, in inclusion first grade. Uh, early childhood, tech, and multi, multiply handicapped students. She has a wealth of special education experience. However, her license was only pre, pre-K two. So what I did is I called someone I know, Ryan Dine, the assistant commissioner of, uh, of ELR, education licensure. And I said, Brian. I laid it out for him, and he told me what to do, which I did. So she has a waiver. Now, we're obligated, because she has a waiver and because it's special education, to provide certain trainings to her. And Mary has already, um, begun to look at how to do that. Uh, you also should know that part of the waiver is, the job has to be posted and opened up again next year.
Yes.
It's just the way it is. If, um, Ms. Jordan gets licensed between now and then, because she has thirty credits in special education, uh, from Salem State. So I don't know exactly why she didn't get it. Oh, you, you know what? They misunderstood that it wasn't thirty, it was twenty. So she has a lot of the required coursework already.
Yeah.
Uh, and she knows our students, she's worked with us before, and, uh, again, she'll do a fine job. Uh, when I told her about the reading, uh, program that, uh, we were looking for, somebody to go to. And then we hired one of the, uh, two power professionals. Again, we had, we had a power professional vacancy because, um, our power professional who resigned moved to Denver. Nothing to do with us. We hired Lou Lawler. Somebody who probably knows him, he lives in town. Lou taught English at Salem High School, retired. Uh, I can tell you, he was there before the new millennium. Vast experience. And kinda like me, wants to keep his hand in it. And, uh, we are just so thrilled. And at one thirty on Thursday, I will interview another power professional candidate. Lou will be working eighteen hours. Eighteen point seven five, let's forget. One's eighteen point seven five, he's eighteen point seven five, the other one's eighteen. So, um, and that's where we are. Um, Lemons? Let me.
That's me. Yeah.
Right?
Thank you, thank you. Moving on to work business.
Okay. So I'll blast through this because this is in the rearview mirror, but I know how you like to, uh, keep things. Um, summer camp report. We had a total enrollment of twenty-five students, and we had eight to ten students, uh, on a particular day. The grade span was preschool through rising six, with most of the students falling in the first grade, uh, as well as second and third. Uh, I'm not gonna go into the activities the camp did. Uh, you have them in writing, you can read it probably better than I. Uh, the second thing I'm gonna report on is our summer academic enrichment program. We had forty-seven enrolled, uh, twenty-seven to thirty children per day. And that's the breakdown from attendance, not enrollment. So the forty-seven was enrolled. We had approximately thirty children, uh, on a regular basis. And from the attendance, obviously, um, not all of these students attended every day. And it's the summer.
Yeah.
But it was a good program. Free to parents and guardians. As I remind you. Um, the only parent, the only summer program parents paid for was the summer camp. And then the acceleration academy. You have thirty-six students in, uh, rising kindergarten to fourth grade. They were divided into three classes led by three licensed Johnson School teachers. They met from eight thirty to twelve thirty for the week. Uh, August twenty-second to twenty-sixth. And the students were focused on building academic skills prior to the start of school year. The, um, K-two will focus on reading and writing. The grade, uh, three and four will focus on mathematics. The grade two, K-two, the quite small league groups, practice letter formation and decoding skills. And grades three and four completed, uh, the, uh, the use of manipulatives as well as using your Chromebooks and accessing your iXL app. So that's what we did this summer.
Superintendent, if I may, just add that, um, anecdotally, I've heard from a lot of parents that the students really enjoyed the program. And, and I was happy to hear that because I was just concerned that, that these thinking of going back to school early or and by, by the way, but today, kids are so happy to be back to school today. Um, and so it's just, it's a tribute to our, our teachers that work this program, our teachers that work in the school. Motivation is everything. And I think that, um, they deserve a big, uh, a round of applause for making this, these programs wonderful, motivating the kids. Um, I was, I was happy to hear that they, they appreciated it, enjoyed it. Thank you, Superintendent, and Madam Chair.
So moving on to work business.
Sure, it's nice to have a school with kids in this element. Summer's boring. And parents were thrilled too. Everybody had a big smile on their face.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm getting organized. All right, ready to go. All right, uh, A, Unit A tentative agreement. Uh, the tentative agreement is signed. I am still waiting for the corrected draft of the collective bargaining agreement, which is the, the contract.
Yeah.
Um, Unit B. Uh, Madam Chair, in your packet, you have the memorandum of agreement, which came to me last week. And, uh, it is signed by, uh, President of the NTA. Uh, I respectfully, Madam Chair, would ask a member of the school committee to make a motion and for you to accept a second and a vote to authorize you to sign this document, which I have with me.
And I'd like to make a motion, please. I'll make a motion to sign, uh, the, the NTA agreement. I'll second.
It's the MOA, it's the memorandum of agreement.
The NTA, the MOA. I'll second. I'll happily sign. Oh, all in all, here. Hi, hi. Sorry. And I'll happily sign.
Madam Chair, for your convenience, I have taken the MOA and I took the signature page on top. It's for the top.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Well, do I have some good news coming up?
Yeah.
Two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, school year. Free lunch for all. Now, there will be an information going out from the food service director that we still have to get data from parents and guardians who will, will qualify for free or reduced lunch because of their income. Um, that's an obligation and, uh, I think I gave you, no, I didn't. Uh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you gave it to us.
Did I give it? I gave it, uh, I gave it to you.
Yeah.
So the, this is what it says, uh, the guidelines. Whilst all school meals will be served free of charge to all students and reimbursed at the free rate this coming school year, student income eligibility must be reestablished and all meals must be recorded and claimed by still student eligibility category effective July first, two thousand twenty-two. Okay? Let me tell you in English what that means. We still have to have parents do the paperwork. And we still have to keep count of free, reduced, and not free, reduced students, even though nobody's paying. Yeah. So we have to do it. But that's great news. And then I gave you the Project Red news release, which is, uh, pretty detailed. Okay. So, remember a few months ago when they talked to you about preschool?
Yes.
As of this moment, we have one outstanding account for three thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars. Which the person was called by me. I respectfully asked them to forward me the payment. Everyone else paid the bill. If you remember when we first started talking about it, we were like thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And we were like sixteen thousand dollars. And I wanna say thank you to the parents and guardians, I, I really mean that. Uh, plus, we've made their payment easier. And, uh, we will continue to work on that. Uh, there's a way for them to do it, set up an electronic. If they set it up like electronic, there's no additional charge.
Right.
So, uh, we're still working on getting it, uh, better. And the phone and bell clock system, I think I already talked about during facilities. So, uh, and we're thrilled about that.
Great. So is there any other committee business that anybody would like to talk about? Um, I just wanted to, and I know we've talked about this not as a group, but, um, I'm grateful for all the hard work that you have done to the staff of the school. And I want something to put out, excited about the new staff coming. And I just wanna express, you know, I think with all the turnover for the summer, uh, there were, you know, concerned parents, you know, what's this mean for the school? Should we be nervous? People are leaving. And I think that, you know, that I just wanna express my gratitude for how quickly, you know, the school was staffed and you know, whereas in other school districts, some are opening up the school year with multiple vacancies. And that has gotta be incredibly stressful for the parents, for the students, for the staff. You know, I, I'm, I'm now grateful that we're able to staff the school, we're holding staff. Um, you know, so, you know, change can be stressful, so, you know, a thought that we had was just, um, you know, I know that in my own work, we have a, uh, staff, uh, employee satisfaction survey. And, you know, it's not, it's not saying that there's unhappiness as to the reason turnover, turnover happens. But how can we, you know, make sure that our amazing staff are supported and wanna stay? Because now we've done all this hard work to get them here. And, you know, what can we do? Because, you know, as you speak to breakage, and it's not always about money, but it's about, you know, resources and training and any way we can capture these amazing new staff members and, um, you know, to the best of our abilities, in terms of staff satisfaction. I mean, obviously, we're not directly involved in hiring and the, and the personnel process. But what we can do is help allocate funds to support, you know, not, not necessarily through their, um, pay, but like, like I said, training, is there anything that we can do to support the staff as a student? This was so very important for teachers and staff. Um, and we wanna be able to tell the, you know, parents and I'm, you know, we're spreading the news, like we have really great staff this year and, um, I mean, it's a CTE, it's, it's something that parents would be really appreciative of. So, um, that was just an idea I thought, um, for, and, and, and come to us, and you always do, when you need that to support the current staff.
You guys, I mean, every, area where I go, I say positive things about the school. Sent it to the new staff, I sent it to the teachers yesterday. First of all, I found a satisfaction survey that is on the Serrancho test. I'm gonna look at it. Uh, some of the questions are ill timed. Because, you know, we're beginning this school year, doing, where, when do we do it? I'm kinda thinking maybe in the middle. You know, don't wait till the end, but don't, yeah, I mean, we have so many new staff members, I mean, you know, they're gonna say, thank you for hiring me, come on. Yeah. They're, they're in a great place. I have talked to several I have talked to several parents who have expressed their concern without doing details and putting facts with names. I can tell you that one parent, the only paraprofessional who left moved. The two teachers got jobs much closer to their homes, working in the same area as their significant others. One staff member got a job very close to their home, to the point where they could walk to their place of employment and went from part-time to full-time. Now, I also want you to know that that staff member wanted part-time for many years. And then life changes. So you're not going to stop that. And then the fourth one retired. But I still think the point is well taken. You should have, information is powerful. And I told the staff, please feel free to say something to me if something feels wrong. So one of the things I can tell you, someone came to me and said, you know, it's kind of chaotic on Tuesday mornings when I come to school expecting blank. And the principal has to run around and get substitutes to take place of people. You know me well enough to know I'm candid. It's terrific. So I sent a message to our special education, the special education department. I sent a message to Mr. Andrew that said, I want the special education, IEP meeting schedule out by Friday for the following Tuesday.
Yeah, what needs to be covered.
So, so the teachers have the weekend and Monday to plan. I'm not going to be here for an hour. What's going on?
Yeah.
But then I looked at the staff member and I said, what if two teachers fall in sick on Tuesday morning? Hell, hell, it's going to break loose anyway. I can't control that. I can, we can control, we can get better at the things we control. But there's going to be uncontrollable.
Of course, yeah. And I think the appreciation there is the ability and willingness to listen, to have communication from staff. Because communication is important to receive it and to either find a solution or, you know, discuss what's, why that comment, complaint, suggestion can't be achieved or other ways to work together and, and, you know, to have a collaborative environment is the most effective.
Yeah, and I think we have one, but you know, there's always people that are uncomfortable, so put in writing. Okay. That staff member's comments and it was two. Also led me to say to the principal, another part-time job on Tuesday. You know, even when we get that unexpected Tuesday morning thing, at least you have a couple of people that can kind of wiggle through instead of it, you know, it's always on person A, B, or C.
Right.
So, you know, yeah, we do listen.
And by, I, I don't, by no means am I trying to micromanage the administration. Like I think you guys do a phenomenal job. The only other thoughts I have is, you know, I think some staff that left for very, you know, reasonable reasons, reasons that we can't control. Uh, one thought I had is, um, you know, if there's ever any communication in the future, I don't know how much you communicate with staff that left, but just suggestions for things that we can update similar to the staff satisfaction survey that you're doing now. Like obviously, you know, we know the reasons that left, but do you have any feedback?
Exit survey.
Which I know what you do in, in general, but just, I'm not asking you the reason that you leave, but like, what else can we do?
Yep.
And, and I, I hear your point about a new teacher coming in and just being grateful to be working here. But sometimes those new teachers have those new
Absolutely.
fresh eyes and new ideas that they maybe have from their old job. And what can we, you know, do that's a little bit different? You know, I, I do think that the outsider, you know, new first impression can go a long way. So even just having them know that this is something their satisfaction is super important to us. And us being able to tell families, you know, as they come to us that it's something that, you know, we're, we're continuing to support as a school community. You know, staff satisfaction has just grown a lot. So I wouldn't wait too long just because of new energy and new ideas might really
Yeah, and maybe it's two different things though.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, what ideas do you have?
Coming into the new school year and now we're halfway in, what can we update?
And then in exit, you know, in June, how do we do it? So kind of three. What ideas do you have coming in about halfway in the spring? Yeah. I, um, please feel comfortable saying things. We, we all believe, you know, I, I talked to the preschool parents. I said, we all believe in continuous improvement. Yeah, I told them, yeah. But, you know, something we're missing, Alice.
Yeah.
We're not. This is not a big ego place. But it is a place that we really want people to be pleased and happy and satisfied.
Right, we're all here for the same reasons.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Any announcements?
I'd like to announce it with a microphone.
Yeah.
I'll write it down.
Now I have a motion to adjourn this meeting. I'll make the motion to adjourn at the thirty-six. I second that motion. All in favor? I. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.